This is a meeting of the Township Committee, June 16, 2025. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press and the Two of her Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 11, 2025. Comiteman Clark.
Here.
Committee Woman Kratz.
Here.
Comiteman Sedambrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our Constitution's freedoms and way of life. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask everyone if they can just please stand for a quick second. Middletown Township lost two individuals this past week, Bob Poss and John DiTillio. Two dedicated public servants to our police department, to our fire department. And their dedication to our town, to our community certainly should not be forgotten, and should certainly have the honor of this body as we stand here today, with absolute respect in our hearts for their service. Thank you.
Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have the Administration of Oath of Office. At this time, I'd like to invite Lieutenant Erica Weeks, please come forward with your family.
I, Erica Weeks.
I, Erica Weeks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, we have promotion to Sergeant. I'd like to invite Julian Reese to please come forward with your family.
Who am I swearing in? I, Julian Reese.
I, Julian Reese.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations, son.
Our next promotion to Sergeant, I'd like to invite Brian McGuire to please come forward with your family.
I, Ryan McGuire.
I, Ryan McGuire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
According. You're jumping ahead of me. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raven doesn't intend to get that for you. It teetered.
For our next promotion to Sergeant, I'd like to invite Eric Van Shack, please come forward with your family.
I, Eric Van Shack.
I, Eric Van Shack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Alright, who's messing with the American flag? Let's give it up one more time.
Our next presentation on tonight's agenda, we have our presentation recognizing Middletown Fire Department Community Fire Company volunteers, Richard Corbet or Corbett, Orbit, sorry, excuse me, and John Parcells for 50 years of service. If you'd like to please come forward, also the department chiefs and.
How many more years does it take? Alright, well, to keep with the theme of public service and appreciation for our public service, it's a special night, obviously, with our promotions. But one of the greatest things that the Township Committee gets to do is to present the key to the city, to dedicated volunteers that serve our town and our community. And today, we have two 50-year members of our fire department. Let's give it up. Yeah, I just wanna ask you, between the two of you, who got there first? Is that true, John or?
Too much.
Too much. And you won't let them forget it, right? Well, you know, Community Firehouse is certainly a gem, a place of safety, a place of comfort for the residents of Leonardo and the residents of Middletown. And there is no greater pillar in our community than the professionalism and the dedication of our volunteers. And to have two amazing volunteers here that have dedicated 50 years of their lives. So 55 each of you, or 60? How old? Yeah, good?
12.
Yeah. Well, Rich, on behalf of the Township Committee, this key is presented to you, Richard Corbett, in grateful appreciation of your 50 years of active service to the Middletown Township Fire Department with Community Fire Company of Leonardo Station 4, given on this 16th day of June in the year 2025, on behalf of the Township Committee. Rich, congratulations on your 50 years. John, equal congratulations, obviously, to you. I want to congratulate you and your family, you know, and this applies to all of our first responders. But the one thing that goes often unnoticed and unheard is the dedication of the family when it comes to our volunteers. And to know that at a moment's notice, you're running out of your home during dinner, soccer practice, sports, whatever the case may be, people are leaving their lives behind to go save the lives of others. And John, you've done that, you've done them a dignity and honor. And on behalf of the Township Committee, and in grateful appreciation of your 50 years of service to Community Fire Company of Leonardo Station 4, congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. The chiefs, representing the chiefs of Middletown Township Fire Department, we would like to thank you gentlemen for their 50 years' service. They touch so many members of the state, not only the people that we serve, but also the new members that look up to them to learn how to do the task, to learn the right way, learn the safe way. And these two gentlemen definitely are true mentors to the new members of this department, and we hope that they continue in that service. And we would like to thank.
Once again, I get to say often, but our fire department, their dedication as the world's largest volunteer fire department, it is not forgotten amongst the members of this governing body and members of our public that are grateful for your support, your sacrifice, and everything that you do for our community. So, once again, I want to thank you, I want to thank your families, I want to thank your departments, the department, your fire companies, because you are the models of success and dedication to a community, and your 50 years of service in this key to the city is just a small token of that appreciation. So gentlemen, congratulations, and thanks for another 50 that have signed up or on the way in. Is the community still legally parked outside or no? I really hope there's not a fire in Middletown. Alright. Rich, where's Rich? Alright, here we go. Oh, Lori's, Lori Keglin. Gonna be critical. Alright, let's give it up for our.
I was.
Did everything I could for the morning. I'm kidding, we haven't done that.
I've been getting updates.
What?
I'll tell you something, I've got updates.
I mean, like, I said, yes, how does ten, oh, five, seven, she knows. All right, Heidi.
Our next presentation is for the Daughters of the American Revolution Middletown Township Chapter Youth Awards. I'd like to invite Ella Hilton, Grace Wall, and Angelie Kaiser, and the presenters to join Mary Perry at the front of the room.
Honored ladies and gentlemen, I am Community Angels Secretary and joining me as, as registra of that chapter of the American, of the, um, goodness, American Revolution. The D A R today has gone from a non-volunteer work and service organization, dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving our history, and securing America's future with better education for adults and children. D A R has a long history of supporting youth and good citizenship. The D A R recognizes a recipient that has distinguished him or herself through outstanding leadership, honor, courage, service, and patriotism. This evening, America will set the awards for three young women, Angelie Kaiser, Grace Wall, and Ella Hilton. I will begin with them, anyways. Grace and Freddy, Ella is seventh grade, both at Middletown Bay Shore Middle School, both have Girl Scouts, so one seventh grade, first learned many people were community youth. She wanted to do something about it, so she contacted her friend Ella, and they decided to build a take some, do some pantry box. It was placed in front of the Bay Shore, the Belford Mills United Baptist Church, and it's been there since one hundred and twenty-three. The communities, the teens used to use it. Grace and Ella would extend their reach further. Last fall, the girls were affected by images of hurricane leaves, devastation, what's on Paranoid. The girls decided that they would organize a drive to collect non-personal food like it's first aid and deeps on. Grace and Ella contacted local, it's just pure convenient drop sites. They learned Lakewood Arrow, but had pilots volunteering their plates, and mixed ones delivered the supplies with Carolina. Selections were overwhelming. Sister Girl Scouts joined in the effort. Grace and Ella helped build six full-size vans and pickup trucks that brought the collection to Lakewood Airport. The supplies was home to meet North Carolina the next day. In just one week, Grace and Ella brought an idea to reactivate. They worked, they lent assistance to a community they didn't know. They encouraged their fellow scouts, other troops, the local community, and a pilot to help in those. Grace and Ella were examples of leadership, determination, and citizenship in their communities. They have drive, motivation, and heart to always do their very best and help those ground.
Angelie Kaiser was nominated for this award by now Sergeant Rick Cruz through involvement as a police explorer in the Middletown Post. She's a sophomore at Middletown High School, more. Angelie is in the marching band on the Winter Guard and plays softball. She participates in bottle cappers, is a member of the freshman sophomore council, concert and jazz band, try on music honors society, and the symphonic honors band. Angelie also volunteers with music in the parks, relay for life, and Middletown Day. She's a member of the Middletown Police Explorers, has attended C S I camp at Stockton University, and was recently accepted into the Academy of Long Public Safety. She was also recently promoted to the rank of sergeant within the Explorer Post. In her spare time, Angelie loves spending time with her family and playing music, bike riding, swimming, and exploring new places. I would be remiss to not mention her parents, the Angelie Kaiser, who's a nurse at Center State Medical Center, and her father, Alfred Kaiser Jr., who was a Middletown Police Explorer himself, a U.S. Army veteran of the Bosnian War, where he served as a field medic, as well as retired police sergeant of the Presbyterian Troy Hills Police Department, and a life member of the Port Monongah County First Lady Squad and member of Belford Engine Company. She's also the granddaughter of two Vietnam veterans. The examples you have set and the values you have instilled in Angelie have led to her becoming such a remarkable young woman. Congratulations to Angelie on being presented with this well-deserved D A R status.
No, I just want to say, on behalf of the Township Committee, congratulations to all three of these amazing young ladies. Thank you for everything that you do for, for our community, from, from working in, in our police auxiliary to, to doing, uh, important, very important projects as part of the Girl Scouts. This is what Middletown is all about, you've proven that. And we're, we're so grateful to have the Daughters of the American Revolution, uh, a- and the Township come together and, and put a spotlight on all the great things that you're doing. So on behalf of the Township Committee, I want to congratulate all three of you. Keep doing what you're doing, continue to be leaders i- i- in our community, and keep making it a better place to, to live and to work and raise a family. So thank you all, uh, very much for everything that you're doing. Congratulations. We'll take one, one, one photo, and then we'll get everybody in space. Okay, Raven?
All right, one, two, three, awesome.
All right, and we'll just take, uh, individual photos.
Yes.
D A R and Township. Come right in, perfect, stand right there. Raven?
One, two, three, awesome, congratulations. One, two, three, congratulations.
You got, you got the best of the shout-out from back in.
One, two, three, congratulations.
All right, let's give it up for these young ladies.
All right, Heidi.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three four six six, an ordinance authorizing lease renewal with the Navasink Maritime Heritage Association, a non-for-profit organization for the Grover House located upon block ten sixteen, lot six, as shown on the tax map of the Township of Middletown, not currently required for public purposes pursuant to N J S A forty A colon twelve dash fourteen C.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four six six? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Roll call.
Roll call. Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Uh, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three four six seven, an ordinance amending township salary ordinance setting salaries for non-contractual employees for two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three four six seven? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three four six eight, an ordinance amending chapter two forty-six of the Code of the Township of Middletown, governing certain construction code fees to comply with existing laws, regulations, and to cover current costs.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Our next ordinance for introduction, twenty twenty-five dash three four six nine, an ordinance authorizing entry of agreement for the purchase and sale of real estate with the United Presbyterian Church of Linkcroft for the acquisition of block ten forty-nine, lot sixty-two, two seventy Everett Road for recreation and open space preservation purposes.
Uh, I am, I'm very proud to make a motion to introduce this ordinance and to preserve this great property, uh, for the purposes of open space and the use in the future, and to prevent development from occurring on this lot. Motion.
Second it with the same excitement.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes, with the same excitement.
Committeewoman Kratz.
I have to say yes with maybe triple the excitement. There we go.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Um, yes, with a quadruple.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes. Just because it quadruple doesn't change the price. We're still, we're still agreed upon the, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. The price stays the same. Uh, my vote is yes.
Okay. Uh, motion carries to adopt, uh, pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Where I expect thirty times the excitement, Heidi.
Yeah, I'm sorry, very excited.
Yes, very excited, okay, thank you.
Our next ordinance for introduction, twenty twenty-five dash three four seven zero, an ordinance amending chapter two fifty-four dash two of the Code of the Township of Middletown, governing local sa- fire safety enforcement to comply with P L twenty-five C nineteen.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Our next ordinance for introduction, we have twenty twenty-five dash three four seven one, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of one million, three hundred thousand dollars for acquisition of property by and for the Township of Middletown in the county of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And our final ordinance for introduction, we have twenty twenty-five dash three four seven two, an ordinance establishing additional authorized street name.
Before I make a motion, I just want to make a comment quickly. Uh, it was about six years ago that, uh, a gentleman asked me to ha- a resident asked me to have breakfast with him at the Molly Pitcher Inn. And he was talking to me about how imperative it was that the township, um, purchase, the access ac- the Acme Access roadway, um, off of Middletown Linkcroft Road. And for years, Mr. Nelson here has been working diligently to try and come to terms. And as many of you know, we now own that property. Um, including up to the last meeting, we were still purchasing small portions of, of adjacent property. Um, but that is now in the works. Thanks to Commissioner Director Arno and the county commissioners, uh, investing, uh, for their portion of it, uh, to make this a two-way roadway to improve traffic on five twenty. Um, that man was Abe Littenberg. And this ordinance that we are introducing today adds his name to the list of authorized street names so that he can get his due, uh, that he has put years and years and years of dedication into. Um, and whether that's Abe's Way or Littenberg Lane, we don't know yet. But Abe Littenberg certainly deserves the recognition, uh, along with the entire Linkcroft Village Green Association in their advocacy for acquiring this roadway. Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Just a separate. Comes to the mic, uh, on July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, for the public comment period to vote against this. I doubt it, but Abe, thank you, appreciate everything, my friend.
Mayor, what, Abe is one meeting away from having, having his way.
Yeah, he is, literally. Me too. Um, all right, we have our public hearing for our open space grant, Monmouth County Open Space Grant, um, on, uh, Kunkel Park. Janet, I know, um, thank you for being here today. Um, and despite the fact that we were turned down last year on this project for Kunkel with regard to the Monmouth County Open Space, I'm very confident that we will, uh, be successful in getting it since we had received it three years in a row, and the rules say that you can't have it four years in a row. So we took a year off, and we're okay with them paying seventy-five percent of some of these land acquisitions, right, Colleen? Okay, so, uh, Janet, you want to provide your presentation on our two thousand and twenty-five grant application for the Kunkel Park improvements?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Perry, members of the Township Committee, and members of the public. I'm here tonight to present the proposed project for our two thousand and twenty-five Monmouth County Open Space Grant application, and to open the required public hearing for community feedback. The project I'm proposing focuses on Kunkel Park. The project I'm proposing focuses on Kunkel Park, a much-loved recreational space in our community that's long overdue for some attention. As someone who spends a lot of time in our parks and hears from residents regularly, I know how important this park is, not just for organized sports, but for casual play, walking, and community gathering. So a little bit about the grant project or the grant application. The Monmouth County Municipal Park Improvement Grant Program will assist municipalities by providing additional funding needed to make park improvements in municipal parks and open space. The new grant program is funded at $6 million a year and up to $500,000 per project. Some of our past projects here are listed. In 2024, we, as the mayor had mentioned, we did apply for this last year. Some of you might recognize this slideshow presentation. We are again applying for the same thing. In 2023, we had the Bodman Park Baseball Program. 2022 was McMahon Park Phase 2. 2021, McMahon Park Phase 1. 2020, McMahon Park Phase 1, which we did not get because we had received three prior to that. 2019 was the Normandy Park Soccer Complex. 2018, Kunkel Park Pickleball, which we did not get in that year. And 2017, Croydon Hall Playground. The slide did not hold enough space to keep going back further, but I thought that was sufficient enough. Actually, Joe, can you go ahead, two slides, please? Perfect, thank you. So this application right here, there's some, there's a picture on the slide that you can reference while I'm speaking. Some of the things we're talking about improving include the field improvements. Right now, it's a 90-foot baseball field. We're actually looking to do a combination 46-60 and 50-70 baseball softball field with our natural grass outfield, an open concept covered dugouts, warning track and home run fencing, new backstop, a portable baseball mound with onsite storage, scoreboard, aluminum bleachers with concrete pads. We're looking at tennis court improvements as well, which we are proposing two new tennis courts, two pickleball courts, resurfacing, repainting, new fencing, new netting. Playground improvements include a brand-new playground, pour-in-place rubber, new asphalt perimeter walking path. For those of you that may have been there by recently, we, just last year, we finished resurfacing of the basketball courts, which does include four new backboards as well, two of which are adjustable. Benefits of this project, Kunkel Park is long overdue to receive many major renovations, as I mentioned earlier, to honor Bill Kunkel properly with a quality baseball and softball field for youth talent to develop. If the grants received upon completion of the grant, the project, we will do a proper ceremony rededicating the park in Bill Kunkel's honor. Additional 46-60 and 50-70 field with all the amenities, which is the largest age group currently playing recreational, recreational and travel baseball and softball. Renovating the playground will enhance accessibility, promote physical activity, stimulate creativity and social interaction. Resurfacing tennis and adding pickleball to provide another facility for one of the fastest-growing sports. Adding a walking path to provide the neighborhood another amenity for physical fitness, as well as a fun loop to learn to ride a bike or roller skate on. As for the budget, which did change slightly from last year, hard costs are projected at $1,917,201. Soft cost is $200,000. Total project being $2,117,201. Grant projected up to $500,000. So if we are awarded this grant, I am requesting $1,617,201 in capital to match. Joe, if you could go back to the pictures, the picture, and then open up for any questions, comments?
Any member of, first, just want to ask, any member of the Township Committee with any questions or comments for Janet? Okay. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Scott, come on down.
Used to the Board of Ed meetings, do you name an address or?
Your name, please.
Scott McHirs, and I reside in Leonardo Section of Middletown. Thank you for the presentation, Janet. Looks like a great idea and improvement upon the current Kunkel Park. The only thing I didn't see in there that I would like to suggest is shade. The area is pretty open. There's not a lot of trees in the general area of where the playground is, the baseball field, it's pretty open space. So if there was some shade sort of structure over some picnic tables, I think that would really help bring community members into the park. And again, I just thank you for, you know, requesting the grant. The improvements seem great for the area. There's a lot of kids in the area, a lot of kids riding their bikes, walking in the area. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and you know what? It's a good point, Scott, because in the, in the skate park, there's a, there's a covered shade structure. So, so yeah, it's a, it's a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, and the reason why I even brought that up, even at Croydon Hall, you know, you have the trees, depending on where you are during the day, though, those trees are not providing shade, and parents are sitting at those picnic tables, and you're getting, you know, a lot of sun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members, Mark?
Mark Soprowski, 38 pal. I just had a question about the playground. Is it going to be an ADA accessible playground?
All of our playgrounds.
They're going to be going, good, thank you.
Any other member of the public? All right, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion, and Janet, let's go get a half a million dollars from the county.
Yep, would love to, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, great job, Janet, thank you. All right, moving on. Heidi, consent agenda?
Yes. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 25-201 through 25-224, excluding 25-207 for a separate vote.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, it's not. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. My motion still stands.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have Resolution 25-207, a resolution authorizing award of contract for Walu Park Site Prep Demo and Asphalt through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey.
Motion to approve, uh, resolution.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Recused.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 25-207 with recusal noted.
All right, Township Committee comments?
Not yet, we have one more.
Oh, oh, acting as the ABC, sorry about that.
Sorry about that. We have resolution authorizing, that's Resolution 25-225, and that is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses in the Township of Middletown for the 25-26 license term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 25-225. Now we have Township Committee comments.
All right. Committeewoman Kratz. Yeah, ladies first.
What a meeting, a big meeting, so chock full of so much good, it's really incredible. It never gets old when we promote our law enforcement, and it's when they take that oath, it's simply amazing for them to be up here with their young families, and it's just, it's really so wonderful. So congratulations to our law enforcement. Also, congratulations to both of our gentlemen receiving their 50 years of service through our fire department. What, it's just a testament to volunteerism and the dedication for our volunteers who serve our residents each and every day, who, as the mayor pointed out, are willing to walk out of their homes and away from their families to make sure that we're all safe. So we are forever grateful for their service. And at, and the very last, congratulations to our three young ladies receiving their, their DAR awards, just really wonderful projects that they had come up with. And again, just a beautiful way to not only serve our community, but also be recognized as, as young people making such a big difference. So we're, we're very thankful to the three of them in addition. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Committeeman Setimbrino.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, when I, when I got to the meeting and I saw everyone in the audience, it was a packed house, standing room only. I was convinced that everyone is here for the Daughters of the American Revolution. And then, then, but, but I was remiss. There are, the, the advancements that we had this evening showed the dedication from the members of the Police Department to the Township of Middletown, and truly, truly great to have that, and to continue to see that advancement. With regard to Rich and John for 50 years, I can only imagine what that may be. You can't, you, you, you can't even show that dedication, and all I could say is thank you very much to the Chiefs. And Chief Kelly mentioned something that was, that, that none, neither one of either Rich or John signed up for, or none of the PD advancements signed up for. And that was the job of mentor, right? Dan, you mentioned that, and you said, now that they'll continue to be mentors for everyone before them, for all the younger generation, and nobody ever signs up for that, but the best, the best in class and the, and certainly our 50 years of service awardees tonight are truly mentors, and we appreciate that. So, so Mayor, thank you very much, we thank everyone tonight.
Thank you. Committeeman Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. First, as the mayor started off the meeting with former Chief Detillio and former Special Officer Pass, who are both personal friends of mine, and I had the opportunity to work with them in the fire department in particular, so our thoughts and prayers are with their family. I specifically had the opportunity to train all of John Detillio's kids at the Fire Academy over my career. So our thoughts are with them. For Rich and JP, they, I've known them for the entirety of my 25-year career in the fire department, and they have been mentors, sometimes good, sometimes bad, depends on what the situation was. But mentors nonetheless, and friends, and they are guiding a newer generation, and it's remarkable, you know? We got two chiefs sitting down here, one of them's getting close to 40 years. One's getting closer to 50. And, and Chief Lawrence has been somebody that I've worked with and looked up to for quite a few years as well, and they're, they're well on their way to doing the same thing. So keep up the amazing work with the fire department. Our officers that were promoted, some of them I'm friends with, some of them I've gotten to know over the years, not as friendly, but they're all amazing, professional, and do a terrific job. And then lastly, we introduced the acquisition of the Presbyterian Church property today. And what nobody in this room, except for maybe a couple of people up here know, was that 41 years ago, a little Ryan Clark walked in there in a suit to go to pre-K. And I wore that suit because someday I wanted to be President of the United States. And, and it was walking into that school, and my mom has a picture of it, or my mom and dad have a picture of me doing that. So that property's been a part of my family for a very long time. My grandparents were parishioners there many, many, many moons ago, they've since passed. And it's just, it's neat to see it being preserved and a portion of my life being preserved at the same time. So thank you for working with us, we really appreciate it. That's all I got, Mayor.
All right, thank you. DM?
A lot of great comments tonight, great job by all. I'm not going to complete, repeating everything, but the acquisitions that we have been making the last, the last six months has just been, been amazing, and it's, you know, paving the way for a future of, of open space here in this town. So much appreciated, I know the mayor put a lot of time on this, so thank you, Mayor, appreciate the county's involvement as well. I got to talk about something that I, that I wish Tara and our Public Information Office was here so I can talk to them straight to their face, because I saw a picture on Facebook, and anyone that knows me, I'm not really involved in that so much, but I saw a picture of me in a tutu a couple weeks ago. I'm sure the mayor had something to do with this.
It was a personal request.
Yeah. I haven't done something like this in about 20 years. I've been trying to get myself in shape a little bit for the last six months, and it's been, it's been a challenge. So I said, this year, I'm going to run with my family the tutu trot, which was extremely hard. I know there's a lot of people that, it's three miles, it's not a big deal, but I came in here prepared, but we spent some money tonight, I can't ask Ted to cut down the road a little bit lower there. What's the name of that road again, Ted? I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now. No, Yuland. Oh, boy, I couldn't make it up that hill, but I just want to.
It was uphill both ways, in the snow.
It was a hill, it was a hill, it was for sure a hill, but I just want to thank the Gorsinger family, Andrea especially. There was a thousand runners that day. That's, that's a big deal to get that many people out for a great cause, so just an amazing job. She's done it, this is the fourth year, I believe, Mayor, is that right?
It's got to be.
Yeah, fourth or maybe fifth year, but I will be trying to run it again. Hopefully, I can continue the whole thing. I had to stop up that hill because I was checking out some garbage cans and stuff in town, but, but I, I'm going to do it again. So, Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Deputy Mayor, congratulations on finishing your, your 5K the other day, the tutu trot, raising money for, for pediatric cancer. So congratulations, pal, congratulations. Again, a lot of great comments at the Linkcroft Presbyterian Church, thank you so much. Thanks for preserving that land, really, really appreciate it. It's going to be a great use, and, and the fact that it's going to have future use, educating our kids, having, having young families come there, seeing the soccer that's occurring right across at West Front Street Park, that, that's the Middletown that we're looking to keep, that's the Middletown that we're looking to preserve. I want to thank Commissioner Director Arno and Commissioner La Citra for agreeing to help fund this project 75%, so the township is spending 25%, just like we did for Modern Day, and, and coming in with the 75% from the county. It's a win for everybody, it's a win for Linkcroft, it's a win for Middletown, it's a win for everybody that believes that a property like that should be preserved. So again, thank you to everybody at the, at the Linkcroft Presbyterian Church. This conversation actually started, I had called Judy Musa and asked if Judy could connect me with whoever, we were, we were sitting in Tara's office, Tony and I, trying to get in touch with Judy to try and get all the players together, and rather than that church being knocked down and that history being soon forgotten after, it'll be preserved forever in future generations, and, you know, perhaps a future President of the United States might walk into the, into there. I'm not saying you're not eligible, Brian, I'm just, um, yeah, he's got the age thing. All right, easy boys. So thank you again, thank you. To my friend Abe Littenberg, thank you, my friend, to the Linkcroft Village Green, to seeing the, the speed reductions done on 520, to seeing that Acme Access Road be done. It's a group effort, it's a collaborative effort. I know Abe hates the fact that, that, you know, the focus was on him the other day because Melanie, Mary, Lori, every single person that's involved in the Linkcroft Village Green has been great to me. We haven't agreed on every single thing, but the fact that we've agreed on more things than we've disagreed on is what makes the conversations that happen in this room, upstairs in my office worthwhile, and that, that's how government should really work, and I want to thank all of you, because you all deserve a lot of credit on, on getting all that done. So thank you all very much, and Abe, congratulations to you. Today, we, we, you know, put a spotlight on, on our volunteers that have served 50 years of service, and today I just wanted to make a, a point that we authorized the first volunteer incentive program disbursement today, authorizing funds to be given to those who dedicate themselves to our volunteer fire department, our volunteer EMS, and that property tax payment that has been approved by the Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs in the state of New Jersey has been dispersed. So on our volunteers that leave in the middle of the night, that miss those soccer games, that, that do the things that many people do not think about, are getting property tax relief today because of the efforts of this governing body and because of a grateful town that is able to help them in just a little way. So I want to thank this governing body for getting that done. I want to thank them because when we stood at Navas Inc. Firehouse in September of last year, a lot of people had a lot of doubts that we were ever going to be able to get this done. The state was going to come in and stop us, that people were going to, going to say that this was unfair. Not one of those things occurred. The state was a great partner, and for me to say that, sitting here, you all know me, I tend to yell about them a lot, but they were a great partner in this. And I want to thank Commissioner Suarez, the Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, for her partnership, the local government service. the local government services office, for everything that they did, and to all of our professionals here that made that happen. Today's a great day for our volunteers and we thank them for that. So thank you. Two other things I just want to point to, and Janet is, and Ted play a big role in both of them. Today, we awarded the bid for the Murray Farm, the barn roof. And as we head to America's 250th birthday next year, a site that was once, a site that was once listed as one of the most endangered Revolutionary War sites in the state of New Jersey is now able to be preserved and there for future generations of Americans to come and explore. And to see all the efforts that have happened at the house itself and now the barn, to have one of the last remaining few Revolutionary War barns in the state of New Jersey preserved for future generations is a big win for this town. And to Janet and her team, to Ted and his, to everybody that was a part of this, that's a big win. Our train and gutter grant, Heidi, that I know that she had worked on, Tony had worked on, Ted, at the original train station where we have, we now have, our Middletown Historical Society is there with their historic artifacts, the efforts to now repair that building and preserve it for future generations. I started off with this theme about that's the Middletown we want to preserve. This is the Middletown we want to preserve. This is the history we want to preserve. And this governing body is making it happen with our professionals and with our elected officials and with, and most importantly, with the public. So I want to thank everyone in the wins that we have seen just here at this single meeting that we have been able to vote on and effect that great change all throughout our town. So to everybody, I want to thank you. With that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. I ask that you state your name for the record and that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Honest Abe?
I so enjoy coming to these meetings and the focus on positive things. And I think that the people who are not being recognized and appreciated enough is this group, this committee, Township Committee. We have been working hard to try to get Linkcroft safer. And you listened and I was really, I was amazed when I came off the Parkway and I saw the signs, the big flashing signs, new speed limit. And then all of the signs that said 35 mile per hour and under the words it said new. And all I got to say is that with all that you do, with all the things you just mentioned, you all deserve all of our appreciation. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Abe, appreciate it. John, come on down. How are you doing, John?
Good, how are you? John Spinelli, 91 Burlington. I'll be quick because I got to run to Whole Foods before they close.
Are they closing?
Nine o'clock, so.
Oh, okay.
I just had a question, you mentioned the medicine. I just had a question about the volunteer give-back program. Was there any update with, if you could register with the free parking with the commuter lot, like the train station?
We actually did an ordinance for that not too long ago. And as long as you're a volunteer on our approved list, then we have free parking permits for the main lot.
Okay. I'm an active member of Leonardo, so I was just wondering if I could.
Come on in tomorrow, we'll get you a tag.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right.
The other thing I want.
Pick me up when I need to get on the train now, because I don't qualify for one of these tags.
Why not? The other question I had was, I had a proposal, kind of, kind of based similar to the Van Zant road sign.
Yep.
I want to bring it up to the Township Committee. I know, obviously, they're not Middletown residents, but similar to other towns, how they have honored these two people. I want to ask if we can maybe put up a sign for John F. Kennedy and MLK and reach out to someone like the Knights of Columbus or the American Legion and see if they'd be interested in sponsoring, like putting up like a sign on Main Street or Middletown, I don't know if Middletown Linkcroft Road is a county road or a township road, but kind of like adding a sign to one of the main roads here in town.
Got it, it's a good idea. We'll have to, we'll discuss and consider.
Sounds good.
All right.
Take care.
Go grab your Whole Foods order. See you, John, thank you. Any, yes, ma'am, come on down. How are you today?
I'm Ashley Stud. I agree, great, great meeting. I'm here, I emailed you like three hours ago, so I gave you absolutely no notice, but.
I was out, I saw it come through, I was, today was the No Limits Cafe charity golf outing, so I was out there supporting them today, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand where we are with, are you still willing to help pay for the Class III officers? My understanding from Dr. Alfon, the superintendent, was that that was taken off the table by you, but.
Which I said was not true then, and I'll say it's not true today.
Okay.
It was, it was turned off by three days prior to their meeting was when they reached out. Three days, I'm sorry, three days prior to our budget introduction was when a follow-up was done. And with no request for any type of follow-up after the meeting in which they pretty much said no to the offer that the township had put forth.
So potentially at a future shared services meeting?
It can always, it can always come up. Anyone from either committee can always put something on the agenda. I'll never not discuss something.
Okay, good, well, I'll keep asking.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You got it, no problem. Any other member of the public? All right. Seeing other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second. Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody, thank you all so much.